I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Nashville Town Council to order it this time. Could you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, we just invite you into the chambers tonight for this meeting. Lead us and guide us to make the right decisions for all of our citizens of Nashville. And we just ask for protection for Ukraine tonight and be with them. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, the first item on our agenda is to approve some minutes. So you looked at the minutes for February the fourteenth, that called meeting. Are there any corrections to those minutes? If not, do I hear a motion, we approve?
No.
Okay, far. Okay, good. The second set of minutes for the February the fifteenth, regular meeting, were there any corrections to those minutes?
I have a correction on page thirteen.
Okay, page thirteen. Okay.
For the February fifteenth minutes.
Randy, when I asked about how many anticipated vendors there might be at the promised market, you indicated twenty-five or twenty-six.
Mm-hmm, correct.
And the minutes indicate that the number was not immediately available.
Okay.
And I think that needs to be corrected.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion that we approve the minutes with that correction?
Some may.
Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, minutes are approved. Next on our agenda is our public comments. First of all, we have James Baker. State your name and your address.
James Baker, 103 East Green Street. I live on the corner of Green and Austin. And I know that this is not particularly really relates to the city, but we've got, we have an incident where we had about the last couple of weeks, we've had two wrecks on Austin. And where, um, one was on Washington in Austin, and the other one was on Cross in Austin. And that particular day, the one that was there right in front of Glasgow, it was about an hour later, and I said, what in the world's going on? And I looked, and there was a man out there with two red flags flying them up in there, and cars hit him by. Do they realize that there is no crossing bar on the railroad track there, coming in from out of the county into town? And the people wouldn't even stop for this. I guess he was trying to, to slow the traffic so the train could go through. But, I mean, I don't know. I think it's a, a particular hazard waiting to happen because the people have been known to try to beat the train, but yet there's not a, a railway bar down. But if you go over there on First Street and on, um, fifty-eight, they have the crossbar there. But I just think that since the junction's going in and all that, I think, you know, maybe the town needs to let, I don't know if it's CSX or what, because that's a particular hazard to happen.
Thank you for sharing that with us, James.
Excuse me, Randy, I was gonna say, were you aware of that?
James, you, you're talking about the gates that go down?
Yeah.
Is that by Marisol Miller?
Mm-hmm.
I've never paid any attention to it, honestly.
Well, I didn't know anyone called you about it.
No, nobody's called about it.
What, by the police department or the fire department?
Might need to just check with CSX. I don't know. That's Chris.
I believe there was crossroads there, and for some reason they were removed. It has been several years ago when they were removed. But I have the number for the gentleman that's in charge of that. I will try to make sure I make the connection with him tomorrow so I can find somebody on that.
Good, thanks, Chris, so very much. Okay, we'll get back with you. Anna Joyner's next.
Good evening. My name is Anna Joyner, eight oh six South Creek Drive. And may I bring you an exhibit?
Sure.
I only have three, so y'all might have to share.
That's fine. Louise and I can share.
Um, I'm a local real estate agent in town, and most of you know me, and we've been doing real estate for about twenty-eight years. And I had someone approach me about listing their house. And she sent me this picture. And I said, I know this well. It's a house that has ten cars parked in the front yard, on the grass. Most of the time, it's seven, eight, two or three in the backyard. And I said, you're in trouble because this diminishes the value of your home tremendously. It is horrible. I don't like it. I know that we have an ordinance for dogs. I feel like, and I don't know, we need an ordinance for how many cars you can park in your front yard. I feel like since I'm in real estate, I've seen this in several places, and it's the number one thing that really hurts your value, are all the cars parked next door. And I just thought maybe y'all could look at an ordinance. I don't know if that's something y'all can do or not, but I just feel that that's close to my heart. I just don't like seeing people park in their front yards, and especially when there's seven or eight cars. This is normal, and there's more in the backyard. So that's all I had to say. I just wanted to bring it to your attention if there's anything you can do.
Thank you so much, Anna. And we can check and see, can't we, if there's anything we can do. Do you know anything right now that you can comment on, Randy?
I don't, but we can certainly look into it.
But I can certainly-
I assume you guys have the address of the location?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm very familiar with it. It is, I have noticed it quite a bit too, because I used to live in this neighborhood. But the only ordinance that I know of, you know, is that in chief, if you hear, he's making clarify, or lieutenant, as long as they're uh, got license plates, tags, tags on them, that's the only ordinance I know that we have. If they don't have any registration plates on them, then we could, then our code enforcement individuals can take care of it.
This has been like this for years?
It, it has. It has.
It's called being a good neighbor. Or not.
I know exactly what she's talking about.
Well, I just heard that some of the week, like you can't park no more than two cars in your front yard. Even though I wouldn't like that either.
But I can certainly see where it would depreciate property.
Mm-hmm.
And that's not fair to the homeowner. Thank you so much. And is there anyone else that needed to speak that neglected to sign up? All right, if not, we'll move on to our next item on our agenda, and that is our financial audit. And this is Phyllis. Thanks for coming.
Okay, I'm not here to present the audit report at this meeting because-
Can you fix the mic, help her with the mic, because people will be-
Does that do it?
That does it.
Okay.
And tell us your name, so they'll know you're not-
Phyllis Pearson, and I'm the audit partner with Petwell Mills and Pearson CPAs in Zebulon. We are not here to present the audit report, but we're here to give you an update. We're in the process of writing the financial statements. As you are aware, you install software. The modules of, of the software were not integrated, and journal entries were used to post transactions, heavily used. And that makes auditing a lot harder. And when John came, he had to complete the closing, correct records. He had that completed in early December. And our, my staff took their holidays, and they brought COVID back. And that delayed us another month. We are wrapping the audit up, and we're trying to get things back on schedule. There will be, of course, because it's a required LGC comment that a late report be communicated, we're going to downgrade that to a management letter point. It's easy to handle, given the conditions. We did have some problems with availability of records, more in the sense that were misplaced, and it took some time to locate them so that we could complete testing. We still need invoices and evidence of ownership for fixed assets to complete the audit, and John is working on that. But some of it's just time-consuming. So any questions, anything I'm, further I can explain?
How late do you anticipate us being with the audit?
We're trying to have it completed and submitted by March fifteenth. And I think it was finished last year, about March fifth.
It was in March.
Yeah.
Any questions for Phyllis?
What is the LGC requirement as far as the date that it should be filed?
It's October thirty-first, but at that time, you didn't have a financial officer in place.
Right.
And the, the closing process, the auditors cannot do. And we can't correct records. And you were kind of in the situation, hire somebody to replace your finance officer, or hire so, another CPA firm to come in and complete the records.
So, and I guess this may be a question for John, but the, the LGC is aware of the circumstances of the audit being laid, and why that's the case. Is that true?
They're aware. They require us to update them through a software system that they have.
Thank you so much, Phyllis, for coming and sharing with us.
Thank you.
Our next item on our agenda is old business, the Glover, the Glover Park improvements. Oh, you're gonna share with us. Good.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Cindy Ferguson. I work for the Nash County Recreation and City Services. Taylor Lewis is our maintenance supervisor. We are here tonight to present. Thomas Gillespie had a prior engagement. So I'm just gonna read what information he's provided. The Nash County and the town of Nashville entered into an interlock agreement on January twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one. In this agreement, it states that the town shall allot in their budget twenty thousand dollars for park improvements at Glover Park. At the November third meeting, the town council approved the laser grading project, which is twelve thousand and fifty dollars for fields three and four, and the basketball court improvement projects were five thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two. After improving the two projects, the remaining balance for Glover Park improvements are two thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Staff is recommending the remaining funds be spent on the concession stand improvement. So please see the, he said he sent a PowerPoint presentation. So basically, the project description is to install two compartment sinks with splashback protection with drainboards or countertop space for air dry. Two compartment sinks must be sufficient sized to submerge, wash, rinse, and sanitize utensils. The project justification, it, it will allow the concession area to serve hot food items, which right now we cannot do. It's all prepackaged foods. But he also wanted me to make you aware that this is only step one of what needs to be completed for the concession in order for us to be able to serve the hot foods. The other aspect is, has to do with the floor and the restrooms and the concession area. He has gotten a quote for fifty-eight hundred dollars to have its seal coat or epoxy coating on the floor. It helps with food particles. It is also another requirement of the health department. So he wanted me to make you aware of that. I know that information was not provided. It, let's see, we were informed again that the two compartment sinks must be installed in order to serve the food. And right now, again, only prepackaged food is, is being allowed at this time. So a timeline on it, we want to complete it in this fiscal year by June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, and then the floor aspect will come in twenty-twenty-three. But the whole cost is twenty-six hundred, and that's basically what's left for this year's budget.
Cancel. What is your?
So, oh, I'm sorry. Um, we won't be able to serve any hot food until all of the-
Until both renovations- Those elements are completed. That is correct. We will still do prepack-
You have to do it in the kitchen?
Something by the health department. That's all I know to tell you. I do, I can confirm, we also operate out of Ennis Park in Red Oak, and they are the same way. They have an epoxy flooring in the concession area as well as the restrooms. And I do believe Miracle Park is the same, correct? So Miracle Park in Cooper's is also the same. So whatever it has to do, it's gotta be OSHA regulation and, and the health department standards.
I understand.
I'm David Lee. We use the remaining twenty-five hundred dollars for the sink.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you so kindly. The next item on our agenda is our revised charter, town charter. And, Randy?
Well, I bet you guys were hoping you were finished with this after the last meeting. And if you had a chance to read the, the summary that was in the packet, there are two schools of thought by attorneys regarding our ETJ. In nineteen eighty-five, the town had a special sessions law passed by the legislature that allowed the town to go out to two miles for an ETJ instead of one. Right now, chapter one sixty D says any town our size can go to one. Back then, it said the same thing. We got permission to go to two. We only have one location where we've gone beyond the one mile, and that is on sixty-four alternate going out to the prison. Our ETJ line is beyond the one mile. That's the only location that it is. Anyway, what, what's being recommended by at least two of the attorneys that have taken a look at this for us, including our own Raz, Raspberry, is that we can just simply take that section seven point one out of the charter. It doesn't change anything. We're still governed by chapter one sixty D two oh two. That is the law for ETJs for towns. And chapter one sixty D, there are, there's two places in it where it says that the adoption of one sixty D did not change any prior authorization a town may have gotten for something a little more, such as taking your ETJ to. The, the concern about leaving it in the charter is if one of our legislators, staff people, goes through this and sees that and says, well, wait a minute, this is contrary to current law, and our charter gets bumped out for a whole nother year. Rather not see that. What two of the attorneys are recommending is we simply take that sessions language that's currently in our charter and put it in chapter eighteen of our town code, where the, the planning and zoning or the land use development ordinance. So that is where staff is recommending we take that section and recommend in the council, we just take seven point one out of the charter, move seven point two up to be seven point one, and, and continue.
I have a question, Randy. Just make sure I understood what you were saying. And I agree, I think we do need to take it out of the charter and move it into our code of ordinances. But that even under the general statute, one sixty D dash two oh two, that does not affect the eighty-five session law that says our ETJ can be extended up to two miles?
Correct. It does not.
All right, I just wanted to clarify.
I think the exact language is nothing in this amendment shall take away anything that is already in place.
Okay, do I hear a motion that we approve the town charter?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Great. Okay, our new business is our fire truck replacement. And where is our chief?
January the second, two thousand and eighteen, I stood up here. It was twenty-two degrees outside, and we had Richardson Funeral on burning that, when I, last time I spoke to you about a fire truck.
Oh, me.
So let's not do that again.
No.
Um, I talked with Mr. Lansing and John about replacement of our third engine because of the years of age on it, and we were looking at the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. So that would put that truck at twenty-four years old, which is over the life expectancy of these front-run engines. Well, after going to Concord and talking with different truck dealers and everything, come to find out, there's a bunch of price increases coming. There's a price increase of seven percent coming May first. There'll be another price increase of five percent February first of next year, and they already know of another one, February the first of the following year. So in that package you'll look at, you'll see where I said that it would, at the price of the fire truck today, if we waited till that one period of time, it would be a hundred and sixty thousand more dollars. But then we come to find out, if you order a truck today, the turnaround time on an order is twenty-three to twenty-four months. So we are already at that point now where if you order now, you're gonna be in the twenty-four, twenty-five budget before we get the truck anyway. So I talked with Mr. Lansing, talked with John. We went through Pierce. Pierce is the truck that we've gone with for the last four engines we've gone with, and, or last three engines we've gone with. And each one of these trucks, it'll be set up just like the truck we've got. I'm one of these people that believes, put the truck back in there just like the one you've got, so everything is right back in the same spot so the fellows know where to go get it. Now, all these fire trucks are priced high. Everything is inflation driven right now. I do know there were some truck manufacturers that have notified people that have POs out there now that have gone back and told them, we've got to go up on you. I've heard anywhere from two and a half percent to nine percent on POs that were already issued. So that's one reason why I asked Jeff Turner to be here tonight to speak on that about this, and what we're doing with Pierce on the side of this contract. If we go, if, if you give me permission to do this, we wouldn't order the truck till probably sometime in April. A few neat things, we're probably gonna take off this truck that we don't need anymore, might help with the price on it, but Jeff will be working with us. He might already have some of those things figured in. But as you know, I'm not gonna come to you without something in the plan that's gonna try to save us money and do what's right for this fire department and the people that we serve. That's my main objective, is taking care of our customers. So, y'all like to have Jeff come up and speak on behalf of the fire truck?
Yes, that'd be good.
Good evening. Jeff Turner with Atlantic Emergency Solutions. Like you said, last time I was here, I was a little nervous because he was busy. And I thought I was gonna have to present the last fire truck, so glad it all worked out. So everything's, inflation's out the roof, everybody, politics, price of lumber oil, everything's gone crazy. Fire truck industry's no different. So Chris asked me to give him a budget number for the twenty-four budget year, twenty-four, twenty-five budget year, so we started talking. Well, I would probably tell you guys, September, you probably could order a fire truck, have a twelve-month lead time last September. We're at twenty-three months right now, and that number's probably gonna grow in ten days from now. We'll get a new notification. That number's probably gonna grow out even further. So we're at, at least two years before you see a truck if you order it today. With that, we had a price increase February first of seven percent, and that's the annual price increase. So we knew every February there's gonna be a price increase, right? So we can calculate that in. Well, all of a sudden, here, we got another seven percent coming on May first because of materials, raw materials, inflation, and everything else. So just today, between now and May first, if you order a truck, you would, uh, save fifty thousand dollars, right? That's a pretty big number. So then you figure the annualized price increase that we know of, you're up to that hundred and sixty thousand dollars if you ordered today versus July twenty-four. That's not counting the unknown price increases like we're getting ready to have, which I don't like to talk politics, but there's no telling which, which direction if we're gonna keep going up, down, level off. But what we know is a hundred and sixty thousand, if not more, in my opinion. Chris and Scott have, uh, technology's changed a little bit, and everything's going from more battery powered and stuff. So they, we were able to cut some items off this truck. This thing was actually seven hundred and fifty thousand probably when we started on the first number. So we were able to eliminate a generator because things are more battery-powered now, so we saved twenty-five thousand probably in there, and a couple of other things. So we, they, they, I think they've done a good job getting the number down from where we started. I talked to your finance director just for a minute. There's also a prepayment discount you could take advantage of if you want to pay for it now, save twenty-three thousand dollars. Choose not to do that. You can pay me when the truck comes in in twenty-four months. That's totally up to you guys. But it's a, that's a, pretty much all we got is gonna be, like I said, twenty-three months if we order it now. And that's what we got. Yeah, not based on the prepayment. That was just based on the current, coming price increase and the two annual price increases in between when you planned on ordering it and today. So that's what we got.
Thank you, Jeff.
All right?
Yeah.
Jeff, we might have some questions. Yes.
Go ahead, sir.
No, go ahead.
Oh, okay. Well, I think my question might be for Chris. I'm just curious, at the time that we sold the two thousand and one truck-
Yes, ma'am.
Um, do you have any rough idea of what we might hope to get?
Twenty to forty thousand. The truck today, the truck today has ninety-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-four miles on it. That's the exact miles, unless they've run a call since I've come in here on it. So, but that, remember also, the town of Nashville is in a three-engine need. Also, the Gully Fire District, we're supposed to have three fire engines that are capable of doing the job for us.
Based on what, what Jeff is, what you and Jeff have gone about, talking about cutting, cutting corners to save us some money, are you satisfied with that?
Yes, sir.
You are satisfied?
The generator, we're going to battery fans now. We've got great big battery lights that we use, so the generator is really not a needed thing on there. So I put twenty-five thousand dollars on something else to break down that I can save us money on.
Okay. Uh, you've mentioned on the prepayment. Can, can we, and I don't know, Randy, can we, can we, can he go ahead and order the truck now, um, by May first, and every year we make a payment on the truck? So when we do get, take delivery, we don't have that much left to, to pay?
John can answer that question. John, is that an option?
John was talking to us earlier about that.
Uh, the way, the way I understood it from what he said is we would have to pay one hundred percent of the cost today, which we are able to do. And this week I was priced it getting quotes for CD rates and whatnot. And right now, a year-long CD is at point eight percent. So this is a better, since we need to purchase this, that's a better option than putting it in a CD for a year, so, for two years.
Okay.
So you're suggesting that we pay for it upfront, seven hundred and fifteen thousand?
Uh, I am saying that seven hundred and fifty thousand paid upfront and getting twenty-three, twenty-three thousand back is a better option than putting seven hundred and fifty thousand in a CD, a mutual, a, a CD, money market account, or with NCCMT. We would get less than twenty-three thousand in interest.
And they say we're taking that out of fund balance for the capital improvement?
Uh, yes, that would, that would be out of fund balance. We would have to do a budget amendment of appropriate fund balance and cap, and the expenditure being capital out of a fire truck. So that would be taken out of fund balance. Right now, it's at six point nine nine eight, some, six point nine five, six point nine five to seven million.
Is that unassigned fund balance?
Uh, I have not separated it out into what, if it's restricted or unassigned, but-
That's important. That's important.
Jeff, if we pay you upfront, we are locked in at that price, right?
Yes, sir.
Pay you everything. You can have seven, more seven percent raises, but we don't-
Um, I'll speak a little bit. Some of my competitors have gone back and said, if you want me to continue to build your fire truck, we get ninety percent additional charge.
That won't happen. Okay, all right.
And if you do decide to prepay, there's a performance bond included with prepayments amount, so your money's protected until the truck finishes. And it was, the prepay was six hundred and ninety-one thousand. We want to say ninety-four thousand, so that was twenty-three thousand. We'd be six hundred and ninety-one.
Six ninety-one.
Six ninety-one, six ninety-four.
John?
And I would like to also add, I misspoke. I said six point nine nine eight. I misread, misread it. Six point six nine eight, sorry.
Um, John, what about the prospect of borrowing the funds?
Pardon?
What about the prospect of borrowing the funds? Has that been evaluated? What about the prospect of borrowing the funds? Has that been evaluated?
They, since we have the money right now, I can look into that, but since we have the money in a, sitting in a money market account now, we can feasibly pay for it fiscally. We can also look into a bond fund. We would probably get 3% interest rate on that.
For five years?
And I can, if you choose to purchase the truck, he can cut the purchase order, and I can give you 30, 45, 60 days to prepay it if you choose to go that route. So if you need to do something else in the council motion or whatever later on, we can wait 60 days.
Well, we're gonna have to have a new truck.
Yeah, we don't wanna wait on the fire truck like we did the garbage truck.
Or two years from now.
And spend a fortune fixing the garbage truck.
If we were to take the money out of the fund balance, I would like to see us put something in place as far as some amount of repayment back to our fund balance in the next two years.
Just an amortization out of, okay.
How much money is in the capital improvement plan?
Right now, it's about $700,000, but the way, it does not appear to be encumbered for any specific project in that fund.
So that could be used?
That, yes, that can also be used.
And that's what we have it set aside for?
We have it set aside for capital projects, not specifically fire trucks, but there's nothing saying that we can't use it for fire trucks.
That's a pretty big capital project.
It is.
I, there's several, and there's other trucks, and there's other, other items that also need to be paid for out of that or put more money into that from the general fund, but.
Right now, the sewer jet back truck is, we're paying for that on time. That'll be paid in 24, I think. We've got about a 1.6.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And that's out of the water sewer fund, right?
Yeah.
So that's the only thing we have on the.
There's also a small CFI loan with maybe $30,000 to $40,000 left on it, but we're also on time for that. So I think that, I think that's paid off in 2026, but it's like $7,000. It's about like $9,000 a year.
Okay, I think we all agree that we need it. We just have to determine how we're gonna pay for it.
The best way to pay for it, yeah.
All right. So I'll, do, do want a report of, this is what our estimated monthly payment is if it's a debt. This is what it would save us if we just pay for it upfront. And this is what we would make if we invested that money and paid for it at the date, at the received date.
Why don't we look at a combination of maybe using some of the capital improvement monies, but not all, and the balance out of the general fund, fund balance?
All right.
But I would be interested in knowing what sort of interest rates we might be able to borrow. I know that we are in a season where they're going up, but if there's still some really good low interest rates.
It's gotta be about 3%.
Well, let's check and see what they come out to.
It might be 2.5 and 3.5, but it's there about.
Let's find out.
Today, the 10-year treasury was about 1.2.
Last week, I think, 3-year treasury notes, they were trading at 0.45. 10-year treasury notes were 1.12.
I think we can, I think we can figure out how we're gonna play it in the future, but I think we need to go ahead and get the chief officer to go ahead.
Could you put that in a motion?
I move that we go ahead and allow the chief to go ahead and place an order with Turner's firm so we can go ahead and get this truck in line.
Do I hear a second?
Long way to the last minute.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good. Thanks. And then we'll figure out the best way to.
Then we figure out the best way to play it.
The next item on our agenda is the town council meeting schedule. Did you look at that? And let me find mine. Were there any questions about this, about the call meeting? You read that summary on page 40, the call meeting, and then reschedule the March 15 budget meeting, and then the water bill and demonstration. So is it okay to amend that to our schedule?
May I ask one question there? And I know we've already approved the 2022 town council meeting schedule. I just would like to get the council's input. With our first meeting in July being the 5th, and I don't know what impact that may have on council members as far as potentially being away for the holiday. Are we good with leaving it on July the 5th? Does anybody have? Are you okay with July the 5th? He's checking.
I'll be good.
You will?
You'll be good.
I was gonna ask, is our call meeting on March the 2nd, is it at 3:00 or at 2:00?
2:00.
On the schedule, it has 3:00.
If you wouldn't, if you wouldn't mind changing that and approving it at 2:00, it was an oversight. I apologize for that.
What date was that, Louis?
March.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Okay, yeah, 2:00 tomorrow.
Yeah.
The 4th is on a Monday. Do you, and you say you're gonna be out of town, right, ma'am?
I'm planning on it.
Change it to moving from the 5th to later on down the week?
Or, I don't know, maybe it's.
Well, let's see, July the 5th, like you said, the 4th's on a Monday. So we usually have our meetings on the first Tuesday. We could have it on the 2nd, which is the 12th.
That would be fine with me.
Are there any objections to that? Any, will that interfere with?
And then have another one in the month?
Yeah, we'll put them back to backs.
Or just not have one, but just have one that month? I hear, council member, we're here for one. So why don't we do that? Because we are diligent about our meetings. So I don't see why combining one in July would hurt anything. So.
Just scratch July 5th altogether?
Could somebody make a motion to that and let's approve that?
I make a motion that we change our July regular meeting from July the 5th to July the 12th, and combine meetings for the month of July so that we have one meeting on July the 12th.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, so we're not gonna have the 19th? And we're not gonna have the 5th?
We'll have it on the 12th.
We have it on the 12th. Okay.
Thank you so much. The next item on our agenda is our Golden Leaf Grant. And you can see that. You wanna talk to us about that, Randy?
Sure. The Golden Leaf Foundation has come out with a new program for counties and municipalities to help them site and develop industrial parks. And they have three different components. One, one is just purchasing land for an industrial park. Part two is doing the due diligence to be able to develop the industrial parks, such as the environmental review, the archaeological review, the endangered species, wetland delineation, all those things. And then the third part is the actual development of the industrial park, taking infrastructure from where it is and extending it to and throughout the park. Our Nashville Business Center is an industrial park on Western Avenue, right alongside 64. And it's been there since 2022. We have two tenants out there. We have two vacant lots. As you know, we recently had those logged, and we were thinking the $42,000 we received in the sale of the timber would go to help, would cover the cost of grubbing and clearing those lots and getting them ready for construction. Well, as you know, it didn't come close. Anyway, so what I, what I'm recommending to the council is we submit an application to the Golden Leaf Foundation for site development, for monies to help put with our $42,000 and grub and clear the tree stumps and the leftover logging debris on that site, on those two lots. So what you have here this evening is the total project cost of $230,978. The proposed, if we apply our $42,000 to it, that would mean we ask for $188,179 in Golden Leaf money, and then we would be able to do that project. And on the back of that is the resolution authorizing the submission and appropriating the $42,000 for a local match.
Cancel. What are your thoughts?
Do we have a prospect for that 12-acre lot?
We have one for part of it. There, there are two. I mean, they're essentially seven acres each, but when, the north lot is not all developable. So approximately 12 acres of the 14 is developable. The north lot, we do have a prospect that would like to utilize that lot for a development. We still have the front lot available.
And the front, the front, the front lot, we can't use it all?
Oh, yeah. That's probably the most desirable one, Larry.
The back lot is the one that's got the drop-off.
Right, right.
So we have nothing to lose by applying for this?
I don't see where you do.
So I say, when you have nothing to lose, by all means, try. So do I hear a motion that we approve this resolution?
Motion made.
Second. Okay. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Good. Let's get that written.
The sooner we can get it, the better.
That's right. The next item on our agenda is the Cardinal Wood subdivision.
So this, this was a late addition to the agenda. I sent it out first thing yesterday. But, you know, we've been working with Bob Mishler with Ashton, Austin Woods on the Cardinal Wood subdivision, which is the property behind Glover Park, to the west of Glover Park and Nash Central Middle School, that 118 acres. They want to annex that property. It takes a three-month period to annex a piece of property, and didn't necessarily want to have a change in ownership. So Bob has talked with the owner of the property, which is Mayo Farm Holdings LLC, and we received a petition for annexation from Mayo Farms Holding LLC, which is in the packet here tonight. And Bob said they were gonna hold off their closing date on the purchase of that 118 acres from Mayo Farm until after the annexation is complete. So what you have before you is their annexation petition, a map showing the area to be annexed, that 118 acres, its legal description, its deed showing that Mayo Farms Holding is the actual owner of that property, and a resolution authorizing the town clerk to conduct the sufficiency of this annexation petition. So if that is all in order with the council and the council desires, you can go ahead and adopt that resolution, and Sarah will get busy with the sufficiency investigation of this annexation.
Move to approve the resolution directing the town clerk to investigate sufficiency of the annexation petition.
Second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
And believe it or not, but I think that's, do you have a report for us tonight, Randy?
I don't, I don't have anything to add.
Well, I appreciate the reports you do for us every week. And if I wrote reports that there, I'd start on Tuesday. Maybe I'd be ready by, but I appreciate those so very much. You know, you sending those. Counsel, do I hear any comments? Thank y'all so much for coming out. We realize the importance and the preciousness of having peace and a great country. And so I would just encourage just to keep the people that are not as fortunate as we are in our thoughts and prayers. But if there's no other comment, I will say we will adjourn. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Have a great rest of the week.